We're not in the room.
There we are.
What?
There we are.
I am?
Yes.
You can just hear me because I'm loud.
No, I just...
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome, and I will call on, if she would like, Joanna Smith, if you'd like to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda, but we're going to move a couple of things around today in the interest of time, and my colleagues have other matters. So, we are going to start out as is. Ms. Kraus-Hauer, do you have any public comment cards? Okay, if they comment, I'll do it later, okay? We'll start the meeting, and then after 9:00 A., we are going to go to 12:00 B. and take care of some voting matters that require the quorum that's here right now. And we'll move through the voting matters, and then so go back to the presentations as soon as the voting matters have been settled. So, in case my colleague has to leave, we don't have, we can still conduct, we have conducted our business, and we don't need a quorum for presentations. So, that being said, there was no closed session, so we will pass on the report of closed session action, and we'll go back to public comment if it comes in.
Do you have a second?
Oh, on the agenda, sorry, thank you.
A second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, agenda passes 3-0. Thank you, Ms. Kraus-Hauer. There's the left side of our brain, the right side of our brain, and then the Ms. Kraus-Hauer side of the brain. That's how it works.
This is true.
Okay. Recognition of the semifinalists and commended students in the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program. So, the National Merit Scholarship Program and the commended students are the top 3% to 4% of PSAT scores from last year.
Correct.
Because it's supposed to be tomorrow, so that would be really efficient. That would be kind of time-traveling efficient. So, I'm going to go up with Dr. Bregge, and we will present these. Okay. And we're back. So, if you hear your name called, you may come up and receive this wonderful certificate that you can't live without, and we have... First, we'll start with Matthew Alana. Is Matthew here? Yeah, these are the National Merit Scholars, we're starting with them. And then, do we have a...
But I don't think they're actually here tonight.
They're not here tonight?
Because we recognize them.
Oh, okay, well, let me just read their names.
Yeah.
Okay. Then there's Christina M. Okay. Diane John. Okay, before we say she's not here? Okay, she's really not here, okay. And Matthew Park? Okay, so those are our semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. That is a wonderful achievement, and thank you very much, and did you want to get a photo?
Yes, we can do, yes.
And now, the top 3% to 4% of PSAT scores in the country at our school here. Louis Chung. Benjamin Gabayan. J.J. Gluckman. Benjamin, can you scoot back up for the class picture at the end? Thanks. Adrienne Hassan. Malia Hales. Sina Koishman? J.J.! Sina Koishman? Sina! Did they start this now? We need a correction on that?
We'll get it corrected.
We'll fix it. Michelle Klein. Charles Levy. Adrian Lowe. Alex McDermott. Brandon Shabani? There we have one! And I saw... Toha Zamir? I remember Toha when he was way big. Do you have, did I give you cue accidentally? I'm not sure. They're not worth anything. Oh, just out of mind, okay. And Emily Zhang. Okay, so we can just have those recemies come up here, we'll take a quick photo, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Where are we looking first?
Me.
Thank you.
Okay, one, two, three. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you those for coming to support those students. They deserve their recognition and the support. Dustin. PLTW.
Yes. It is my pleasure to be able to welcome the next presenter. Nick Walker is a junior student here at BHHS. Over the summer, I was approached by Nick as an idea to be able to start to expand and look at our STEM program and extending it into the high school, or engineering program. And so, I'm going to hand it over to Nick, and he's going to introduce you to the idea and all the research and all the work that he's putting to it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, board. My name's Nick Walker, as Mr. Stevens said. I'm a junior at Beverly. I went to Elradao for elementary and middle school, so I've been in the district for around 11 years now. What I would like to talk about today is the fact that, as a period of new educational growth, development, and innovation is upon us, it's imperative that we maintain a consistent level of attention and effort on all levels throughout the district. Further, what I've noticed in my years in the district, and more so now than ever, is an increasing level of attention on the offerings to the lower levels, namely now at Beverly Vista Middle School. This is a great development, and I stand by it entirely, especially because younger students are being given the opportunity to explore possible interests. Students are receiving more resources than they have ever before in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, STEM for short. And so, the main provider of this STEM curriculum is called Project Lead the Way, PLTW for short. PLTW is essentially the gold standard for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics curriculum. And as I said, programs at the lower levels, namely now in K through 8, are more strong than they have ever been. And PLTW has long provided the STEM-based curriculum for our middle school STEM programs. And so, here are some of the 22 new electives at Beverly Vista Middle School. Courses such as the robotics program and forensic science are provided by PLTW. And a few more, the magic of electrons, flight in space, and green architecture are also courses that line up with the PLTW curriculum. The problem, though, that I've noticed in my three years at Beverly, is that this expansion of opportunities does not segue into the high school. Right now, the 8th graders are asking what higher-level STEM options are available to them at the high school. Realistically, the answer is not many. At the K through 5 levels, students are exposed to STEM activities to stimulate problem-solving early on. At the middle school at Beverly Vista, students have the opportunity to enroll in PLTW courses, although at the high school level, there is a void. We provide extensive classes in STEM leading up to the high school, but this trend is not apparent at Beverly. And so, we see here just a little visual, this void in STEM curriculum at the high school is the root of the problem. And so, I believe the solution to fill this void is the implementation of Project Lead the Way at the high school, starting with a few classes and expanding in future years, which will provide students with these missing STEM resources. The responsibility of ed services is to recognize areas of need, to ask how we can make it better, how we can offer more, and how we can become a more competitive school. We see that PLTW fits right in to the area where we are lacking. The details of the implementation of PLTW at the high school would follow something like this. So, to offer an intro to engineering and aerospace engineering classes coming next year, fall of 2020, and then to introduce more PLTW engineering classes in further years. For example, the engineering design and development class to be integrated into the robotics program for honors credit. So, this is a prime example of how PLTW can be integrated into CTE subject areas. Also, classes like environmental sustainability and digital electronics would provide students with the more specialized area, subject areas. And then courses such as cybersecurity would provide a perfect segue into AP computer science for coding-interested students. And so, yeah, PLTW can be integrated to line up with already existing courses, as well as introducing new ones. And as for the classes we're hoping to bring to Beverly next year, I believe aerospace engineering would be a great class to pioneer PLTW at the high school for the following reasons. Aerospace is a rapidly expanding and developing field in STEM, and as a new age of flight and... Sorry, as a new age of flight and space is upon us, new career opportunities open in a variety of subdivisions within STEM. An aerospace class would allow students to explore specialized fields in engineering, and it would give students the exposure before college, essentially a head start. And ultimately, one of the primary reasons is because aerospace is a personal interest of a variety of students throughout the high school, and now in 8th grade at Beverly Vista Middle School. Above all, the implications of providing PLTW STEM curricula to our students are far-reaching. It would provide students with a major head start for students thinking of applying to colleges that specialize in STEM, such as Caltech or MIT. PLTW courses are highly regarded by elite universities like the ones I just mentioned, which would create more appealing applicants. And the implementation of this program would bolster the school's strength in STEM as a whole. And so, having exposure to certain areas of study in high school feeds directly into college and post-secondary options, like I mentioned. Caltech, MIT, and even out-of-school experiences. And so, I guess now the million-dollar question, or rather, the $22,109 question, is how much will this program cost to implement? Well, just that. To bring aerospace, the two classes, aerospace and intro to engineering, to Beverly starting next year, the total cost would be around $22,000. This includes complete teacher training, as well as all the necessary materials and resources to begin the classes and carry them on in future years. The funding would be sourced from the federal CTE funds, which we have yet to use in full, so there is the money to provide. And the resources and funds are available. It's now just a matter of giving students the invaluable experience that will prepare them for college and even further their occupations in STEM. And so, in conclusion, I hope you'll agree with me when I say that PLTW is the key to a more competitive, interested, and engaged student body. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Colleagues?
Thank you, Nick. I really appreciate your research with PLTW and everything, and putting in the time to find the how much, where the funds are coming from, and everything, so I appreciate all your work towards that.
Thanks a lot.
Incredibly comprehensive and thorough. I really appreciate you bringing all of the details to us, and I admire your interest in the area.
Thank you, Board Member Walker.
Thank you for being here, for presenting this to us. This is the first time I'm hearing about this, so very excited. I know that your mother had mentioned this before, and I look forward to hearing more about it from ed services as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you coming with the price tag. It pretty much spells it out from the beginning, so it's not a mystery. Dustin, and I would assume, I would have to ask Mr. Me too, if he feels, if you feel the need to chime in on this, please feel free so, but what do you want to do for next steps with this?
We hope to be able to offer at least a section of one of each for the fall of 2019, 2020 school year.
You mean 2020?
2021. Historically, if you recall, we tried to launch the intro to engineering course this last year for the 1920s school year. Unfortunately, when the presentation was in April 23rd of 2019, when we were able to get it up to the students, there wasn't enough information in the students' hands for them to be able to grapple on, and so I think at the time, we only had seven students actually enroll in the course by word of mouth. The great part is, with Nick coming to be this summer, being able to offer up the idea of looking at Project Lead the Way and really doing all the legwork in the community. He's been talking to students, school newspaper, some staff in the community as well, from middle school teachers to high school teachers. He's kind of done a lot of the work for me, so I'm going to hire him. No, just kidding. It was only, like I said, Mr. Lee and I only got seven students. At this point, there's already a groundswell, interest both in the aerospace and intro to engineering. We also have some influence by some of the STEM teachers as well, but also the CTE teachers from a funding standpoint. And so, we hope that with, you know, you guys' blessing, that we can go ahead and move forward. The FTE is already on campus, and then the funding is already in the bank kind of thing, meaning it's CTE. If you recall, last year, from a CTE standpoint, I think we had $25,000 rollover from last school year to this school year, because we weren't able to spend it based off the courses we already offer are very robust. And so, we could actually cover the costs in ed services and be able to still have a couple thousand dollars left to buy other shiny things. Just kidding. One dollar. But because, just for clarification, career technology education is not to support or pay for a person, it's to pay or support curriculum and professional development through the federal government to launch career development. So, it's almost like the old vocational training, and it has resurfaced back, and there's a lot of federal dollars that we're able to support programs like culinary arts, our robotics program, our K-Bass program, thank you, K-Bass. We have done the middle school speech and debate through it. We're looking at journalism to add to this, so that's the career technical education funding source.
Okay, so I think next steps, and eventually, some of this will come back for approval for next year, and I would make sure, I don't know if it's been worked into the interim budgets or it needs to be, and you'll circle back about that, so...
Excellent.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Walker.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, so now, we're going to jump forward to 12:00 B. This is the approval of the tentative agreement with Beverly Hills Education Association and the Beverly Hills Unified School District. Can I get a motion, please?
I move approval of the tentative agreement with the HGA. Let's see, approval of tentative agreement with Beverly Hills Education Association, certificated unit, and the Beverly Hills Unified School District.
Okay, I'll second that discussion.
Yeah, I'll start. I think it's really important for everyone to understand what it is that we're talking about right now in this vote. It's, I think it's clear that our path to where we are right now has been not traditional, and I think we recognize that that, in the future, is something that we're going to have to work on. But what's really important to realize about this vote and this TA right now is that there are certain things that happen if we vote this down versus voting it up. So, and I'm already in favor of the calendar, so for me, this is an easy vote, but I think it's important for the community to recognize what happens if this is voted down. The calendar that's attached to this TA, the TA contains language that has been discussed over the last year that's important for reconfiguration, changes in dates to professional development and things like that. If this is not approved tonight, it's entirely likely that all of the K-8 students will not have school tomorrow, because tomorrow's supposed to be a professional development day, and that was in the last calendar, not the change that's reflected in this tentative agreement. I think that'd be incredibly difficult for our families, for our students that are in K-8, in addition to which, tomorrow is the PSAT here at the high school for our juniors. We would not have enough staff to run that with our teachers. We'd have to bring on our administrative staff and district office staff to make sure we have enough people to proctor the PSAT, which also would put a strain on the environment that our students are taking this incredibly important test in. As we've discussed earlier this evening, the PSAT is the qualifying test for National Merit Scholarship. It's important that our kids have the most stable environment possible to take this type of a test. In addition to that, the PD day does not occur. These are really significant changes. These are all really negative impacts on our kids. What we know and what we can confirm about this calendar is that even with approving with a vote tonight, we still have the opportunity to go back and continue discussions and make changes to the 2020, 2021 calendar. So, I mean, the PD days were set up ahead of time in the calendar for this year. The College Board decided after our calendar was approved that the PSAT would be on this day, so that was actually what started the conversation about moving our PD day from the 16th to the 23rd. Things like that happen, and we have to adjust. So, this is one of those areas where I think we have to adjust. There's clearly, based on our last board meeting, several things we still want to talk about in regards to the calendar for 2020, 2021. We have that opportunity to do it whether we vote yes or no on this TA tonight, but the negative impacts on our students of voting no is significant, and that's not something that I'm willing to risk. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice President Hacker?
So, first of all, let me just start off by saying that I want to acknowledge the good gesture that BHGA had, I think it was last week, that you had a membership meeting, and I know that you invited two members of the board to attend. President Margot wanted to attend that meeting alone, and as he should, he's the president of the board, but I do recognize that that was a very kind gesture, and I understand that that really was a way to open up communication about this very important issue. And I don't know all the details about the meeting, but I do understand that generally there's common concern, and I'm hopeful that in the future, in the near future, after today, there will be an opportunity for us to continue that dialogue and hopefully agree on common ground for a mutually agreed calendar that is good for your membership and for, of course, our district and all the stakeholders involved. So, I want to start off by saying that, so thank you. So, on September 24th, as you know, this board convened, it's 21 days ago, and we had the first discussion ever about the calendar. And so, I want to stress the first time, because it was really the first time that we... And so I want to stress the first time, because it was really the first time that we had an open and robust conversation about why we, some of us felt very comfortable with this calendar, and four members of this board were opposed for different reasons to the calendar as presented to us on September 24th. Anyone watching that meeting would have suggested, would have probably guessed that the calendar would most likely be voted down at this next meeting, meaning today. And I myself was one who, I didn't pay much attention to it, thinking that, you know, we'll just discuss it at the next meeting and the votes won't be there. I, as, as, as the days progressed and leading up to today's meeting, more and more information started to come about, and I figured, and this is where I, for the first time, began to understand how this vote is tied to many other issues that affect the operation of the district, as Mrs. Walker has already suggested. So originally, the PSAT was scheduled for October 23rd, and the Professional Development Day was scheduled for October 16th. But the PSAT was switched because it could only be given on the 16th of October, meaning tomorrow. But the original calendar for 2019, 20 did not schedule the PSAT for the 16th. In an attempt to correct this, the administration changed the PD to the 23rd and the PSAT again for the 16th, to the 16th. But this detail needed board approval, and it's also tied into the TA. Until just yesterday, I was informed that in order to reopen this conversation on the calendar, this vote that we're going to take today requires three board members to vote yes on the TA. So it wouldn't be enough if two board members voted, and it wouldn't be, it would be unacceptable for everyone to vote no because, again, we would be compromising the PSAT tomorrow. So, you know, we would be disrupting, again, school also for the K through 10 and 12 graders as well. So just to reiterate, I want to be clear, I still don't support the calendar at all. But do I believe that I really have an option to vote no today? No, I don't. And while I feel that my position here today on the board is a bit unfair, I truly believe it is, it would be more unacceptable and worse for all the 11th graders to be left out without the opportunity to test for the PSAT tomorrow and to cancel school for the rest of our students. These are not options for me. So that's why I'm here today, and I believe that things could have been handled a little differently, and I think that we're going to have to look into that, as Mrs. Walker has already stated. And maybe this board will be given another chance to exercise its governance in the future.
Thank you very much, colleagues. I don't want to repeat too many things that are being said, but I will personally thank the BHEA and Ethan and Joanna for being here tonight, understanding the situation, how we got here, and how we're going to get out of it. So thank you for working with us. I'll leave it at that. My hope is that we can expedite the process with the calendar discussion as soon as this is over tonight, so the community has a calendar sooner rather than later. So with that being said, Ms. Kraus-Hauer, can you please call, roll on this?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Okay, I appreciate it, colleagues. Thank you. Trying to keep the ship sailing. Okay, we're going to move right into the consent calendar. I do have, I do want to say, Ms. Kraus-Hauer, did you get any cards yet? Okay, fine. I'm not going to ask again. There is one letter that was sent to the board that will be entered into the record from Linda Roberts. It'll be into the minutes, so that'll turn out. Okay, consent calendar. I have H. Did you want to pull anything else? That's the computer one.
No.
Okay.
Did I want to pull anything out?
Yeah, you said, I think we're pulling the computer one.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items 10H.
A second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. 10H. Let's see how we want to handle this. I think we should make a motion for discussion purposes, I believe. My making a motion does not anyway reflect my vote one way or the other on this. That's my disclaimer. Make a motion for the approval of one-to-one purchase of personal computing devices for ninth and 11th grades.
I second.
Thank you. Second for discussion. Okay. Before we discuss, do we want to hear about this topic, or do you want to ask questions? Colleagues, what would you like to do? Mr. Me, did you, are you prepared to answer questions? Did you want to, do you want to present anything before we speak?
I have a couple bullets, but I would be happy to answer questions and do it again, whatever's more convenient.
Okay. You can come up, and then we'll go through with comments and questions as needed, and you can throw the bullets and bullet points in where appropriate. Excuse me. Sorry, Scott's shaking back there. Okay, did you have any questions?
I mean, I just want to advise the board that this is necessary because I've seen firsthand classes where with seniors and juniors, and when only half the class has computers, it's pretty difficult to carry out a task without the full class having laptops. So I don't have any questions. I've seen it firsthand, so.
Okay.
I would just, yeah.
And I totally respect that observation. My concern is a bit on the 30,000-foot level. We have a change in leadership in our technology department. We have a pivot away from the learning management system that we had just made, you know, a decision on, I guess, the last board to execute. What I haven't seen yet is a plan for what these computers are going to be used for, how they're going to be deployed in the classrooms, what type of technology is going to be brought into which classes, and this for me is a huge concern. I don't think that we have enough information to roll the dice on an almost $800,000 purchase. I just don't. And while, look, I have two juniors and a freshman, so my kids are the ones without computers, so they are the ones that would be directly impacted by this purchase. But given what we've seen at the middle school and having the carts in the classrooms, in my opinion, that's a more effective way to go. I want to know what teachers are going to be using, what programs in their classrooms, and what technology, because maybe every classroom doesn't need to have computers in it. I don't think that it's necessary in music, in drama, in some science classes, some math classes. So I don't know that one-to-one is something that's so critical for us to have for every student. I think it's important, based on what the, what the class is, what the curriculum is. Obviously, for English, really important. For social studies, I can totally see it. But I think we need to spend more time making this plan before we pull the trigger on an $800,000 purchase. I don't want a ready-fire-aim. I want a ready-aim-fire. And with all of the changes that we have with our learning management system and, and in our leadership in the technology department, I'm just not comfortable pulling the trigger now on such a massive purchase where we don't have so much of the information that's critical to this type of decision-making process. And you know, I tend toward making decisions based on staff recommendations, so this is not something that I take lightly. I understand the need for it, but I think we need to have more of a plan before we execute such a large expense.
Thank you. Vice President Hacker?
I believe I'd asked that question ahead of time, but I don't see my question in here, so maybe my questions didn't make it. Right? I had asked, how many students are using? Is it in here? Or it's?
It's on the second page in the middle.
I remember seeing, asking all of these about the survey. Did you guys, did, were these just lumped together because they were all the same? The computer questions?
No.
How many students? It's not, it's not 100%. Do you see? It's all lumped. I think it's all lumped, so that's probably why I missed it. So do we know that question? I think, I'd asked, like, do we know how many, how many teachers actually use, make use of computers right now at the high school in the way that you'd like to see this program expand?
Right. I don't think that's a simple question is, do we see it right now? We certainly have certain classrooms who have gotten carts where we see technology being deployed. The trouble that we have right now is we have the tech toses who are ready to go out and deliver these awesome concepts with apps, with the Google Classroom, using Google Drive, collaborative learning environment. But a lot of our classes, as Thomas just said, most of our classes are mixed. So that is a challenge when you've given it to two grades, right? Especially when those two grades aren't like ninth and 10th, or 10th and 11th, or, you know? So if you go into a math class, pretty much any class but English, you're likely to find mixed classes. So let's say one of our history teachers does want to use the computers. He or she can't. I suppose if you wanted to do a cart system, you could go one teacher who's interested at a time. The challenges that I see with that, number one, we'd have to take devices out of students' hands who currently have them, would be my guess. We'd also probably need to buy different carts because right now, they max out at 30, and we need to be prepared to have classes of 31, 32, which does happen frequently. I've talked to South Pasadena's tech department in their school, and something that we've seen even since we've gone from one-to-one to carts at the middle school, is it appears that students who don't have a one-to-one situation treat the computers a little bit differently than if it's one-to-one. For example, we are seven something, eight weeks into our school year. We have our first broken device this week. That's remarkable. Our students appear to be taking care of their devices. So I think a one-to-one environment, first of all, encourages responsibility and ownership. We have about 1,300 kids. If we were going to give, I should have come a little more prepared, but let's say we have 84 teachers and we decide that 70 are going to be classrooms that we think need computers, you know, I mean, and we assume that there's 30, 0, 0, like, that's 2,100. We're already considerably higher than we would be at a one-to-one. So if we were going to put carts, sorry, I didn't have this number, but I just kind of just, I think 60 is a fairly reasonable estimate if, like, shooting for the moon, because I agree. Maybe you don't need them for PE, obviously. You probably don't need them in band, you know? Like, there are certain places you wouldn't need them, but if you exclude those and figure you want a digital environment, I think 60 is a fair number of 84, just a wild guess. We're still 700, 800 more computers in that environment. Plus, we would need to buy the new carts, or have two carts, or we, I don't know. I think it'd be a challenge to do the cart. I don't think it's impossible. But I think the thing here that I feel is, I hear you, it's a big investment. I know that there's been a lot of thought about creating a technological ecosystem. What are the networks going to be? What are the computers going to be, going to be working with that network? You know, I think we have planned for a one-to-one with our staff, planned for a one in our PDs, but have been unable to really deploy that. So if our, if our teachers don't have computers and we train them on technology but they can't use them in the classroom, that technology training is lost. Until they can deploy it in the classroom right after they hear it and get coached up right now, I mean, I really think we have to have the environment before we have the instruction. And I think that's the really critical thing. If we want to change the way we deploy curriculum in the classroom, I don't even change, improve, because it's already great. It really is. I mean, our kids are college-bound, our AP scores are amazing, our regular classes are college prep, but we don't have as many tools to be collaborative in a technological era. I mean, I just want to invite all the members of this cabinet and board to think about the way that their life changed from a collaborative perspective when Google Drive came out. How you could create a document now, you could go home and you have four people working on it in four different parts of the world, and you could bring it back together. I mean, that could be happening in our classroom right now. Instead, we've got a giant piece of paper, and kids are drawing a poster, and they're writing quotes in yellow pen and blue pen, and like, it's still good learning, right? Like, it's still there, but the technological ecosystem's not. I think some of our teachers are hungry to go down that road, and some of them aren't. And those who aren't, it's okay. But if we build them up one at a time, and if they learn to do one thing a week, and then two things a week, I just think, assuming that the cart thing would be one to two years down the line, I think it would be a real shame to wait to deploy them at the high school. I think we're going to lose the initiative, it's going to make the learning management system that we're trying to deploy less significant in the classroom. I think now's the time, and I think actually, to be perfectly honest, last year was the time. And just to be clear, right now, if we don't buy those, what I need to do is I need to go to all our sophomore students, take the computers out of their hands, and give them to the juniors in the next three weeks because we need to get them ready for the casp. That's going to bum a whole bunch of 10th graders out, some of their 10th grade teachers who have been deploying the computers, which could be a lot more. I totally readily admit. I just think if we wait for them to be technologically ready without the computers in the classroom, it'll never happen. If we give them the ecosystem, some will come along quickly, some will come along a little bit slower, but over the next two to three years, we change the technological ecosystem. I do think it's possible.
I just want to kind of piggyback off this is, this hasn't lived in my realm over the past couple of years, and so I've always just been a spectator alongside with you. But I will tell you from an Ed Services standpoint that it has been the largest Achilles heel that I've had to climb, or repair. I said climb, not climb. Achilles heel, you repair. Repair because prior to our administration, we had provided third graders, or second graders with iPads, but not 12th graders with laptops. The curriculum that is accessible online is endless, the open educational resources are endless. But exactly what Mark said, what Mark, me, and Kim consistently fight against, and it's not because they're resistant, it's because we're talking out of the unknown. We're presenting professional development on the extension of differentiation in the classroom, utilizing ed tech, and then they go to their classroom and only 10 kids have a computer. So then why did we waste their time? So that's what we consistently get, where if you look at the difference between the middle school, even if the middle school went to a cart situation based off smaller bodies, again, I would have flipped that script. We would have had computers at the high school and then bled ourselves backwards. Same thing with STEM, started at the high school, bled backwards. We're fixing those issues now. Is, the middle school staff was also the least resistant with school, as you recall, because when they had professional development, the kids had the devices, and they can go back after PD to implement directly into the classroom. The most resistant staff was the high school based off, we did really great PD, but then they would receive it and then go back to a piece of paper and pencil and, and so, and I don't want us to also think that is a laptop that defines technology. An example is, through Ed Services, we have purchased iPads for all of the physical education teachers. They do their fitness testing on the iPads, and it syncs directly into the cloud, which then I pull to submit to the CDE for the fitness testing. In addition, someone like Ms. Finley actually has old iPads that I stole from Al Rodeo, no one telling anyone. That we, that the dance team actually utilizes to film themselves to critique, so they self-coach each other utilizing technology, so data doesn't have to be everywhere. So, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities for technology to be infused or offered to our high school students that I feel horrible in Ed Services every day that I don't, I mean, I can't get in there to do it yet.
I'm not, I don't want to misrepresent. I'm not opposed to technology. I love it. I totally supported a learning management system and all that it could offer and the open source data and, and having this available to our kids. I think that it's also important to think about how can we more strategically offer those things in the areas where they are most needed, where you have a population of teachers that is willing and ready and interested in implementing before we spend $800,000 crossing our fingers and hoping that it's all going to go well. I would want to know, what are the departments, again, English, social studies, where those things can be most impactful and relevant? And can we put, and I don't know why it would be a year or two years out for the carts, but why can't we put them in those environments so that they can actually utilize them now? Because there are a lot of kids, not obviously mine, because mine are in, you know, the grades that don't have laptops, but there are a lot of kids in this high school that have those laptops, and they sit in their car, they sit at home and are never used. I know it's true because I've heard this from students all the time. So before we go out of pocket another $800,000, I think it's worth reexamining how we're using it now because I think we can use it in a more efficient way. That's, that's my perspective.
So I have two kids at the high school, and I think last week, I might have seen one start to take it to school, and I asked, why are you taking your computer now to school? Because I'd have been asking, are you going to, are you all going to take your computers to school? And they're like, no, 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 we don't need it. So I'm not sure. I think he said something like he, they were going to work during library, they were going to go to the library and work on something, but it was, we're what, seven weeks into school or eight weeks? And so it's, I mean, he's got like six classes, so I do wonder why aren't they used more heavily? But it could be the teacher, it could be that they also have systems at home. I do see them using their systems at home more often for school staff than not. Like, I would say every day, every day. And I know that they do a lot of stuff from their phone. Like, they, they log on and they do a lot. So, look, if you need them, I understand. I don't want to be an impediment here or a barrier to that. I think you, you all need to, you know, you all know your business better than I do, but I do think that we want to make sure that if there are some teachers that are not using them, that they probably should be, you know, transferred to teachers who do want to make use of technology in their, in their class because their curriculum is driven that way. I don't know. I mean, what do you all think?
Jump on that again.
Sure.
I just, what I want to do is just kind of reiterate the fact that the sixth or eighth grade, we were in a system of just the sixth or eighth grade, we were in a system of just, it was heavy. But when you go to the middle school and you actually see the deployment of the device and the utilization, we haven't had that discussion of, well, the middle school staff isn't really utilizing that opportunity because they've had the devices and been trained. We're, we're, when we're asking questions like, well, how many teachers are utilizing it? Almost zero to none because exactly what Thomas said is, when you only have ten or twelve students that have a device, I can't provide a lesson or curriculum that's ed tech-driven because I'm automatically losing fifty percent of my student population based off access.
But you could identify the areas where it's most critically important and then deliver those laptops to those environments. So if it's, if it's absolutely imperative that English and social studies, just to start, have those because that's where it's, that's where the technology is most relevant. You could collect all of the laptops, deploy them in there, and then when we see that the teachers are using them, the students are engaging and now we have a higher use of the technology, then we could talk about rolling it out into other classes or areas. That, that's what I'm talking about. I think just reallocating resources.
I understand what you're saying. Here's the problem with that, if I may. If, if you said English wants, needs them, right, so we're gonna give English people, I don't think it's that simple. There are a larger number of English teachers than any other department, I think, who are ready to deploy the use of computers at any given time, but not all of them. So if you gave it to every single English teacher, there could be a classroom that is much more lagging in terms of the deployment of curriculum. They'll sit in carts in the back corner until they begin to get trained and grow in that direction. But that would be true of any department. Take science, I am sure there are people in science who would use computers, I'm positive. But not every single one of them tomorrow. So it becomes also an equity issue. Like, you, you have a professional development and you're speaking to the, the early adopters. But the people who are just understandably laggards a little bit, that it's worked what they're doing and they're not in a hurry to change everything overnight, they will not be able to even hear that PD and go and try it. Like, what, what I would hope for, a big win would be your early adopters, the people who can use their computers four days a week, right? They're gonna do that. But they walk across the hall to their neighbor and that person does it once a week. And then once a week again, and then twice a week. I'm afraid that if we pick and choose which teachers, the people who already are down to do it are gonna be the only people doing it. When we do PDs, two-thirds of the people out there are gonna be like, I shouldn't even be here.
When we have teachers that are not fully bought in, how do we ever have accountability? And, and as a district, as fiduciaries, how are we sitting here saying, yeah, we're just gonna go ahead and spend eight hundred thousand dollars and eh, they may use them, they may not use them? I don't, I'm not okay with that.
But from an accountability standpoint is, I, I'm gonna say this for med services, is I can't hold anybody at the high school accountable because they've never been a one-to-one. So when we talk about accountability all the time, absolutely you should hold me accountable for, well, the director of technology, but accountable for the one-to-one active, you know, in the elementary, middle school. But I can tell you that we can go on field trips and look at the elementary, middle school and see some really great opportunities for students based around ed tech. If you were to ask me to go on a field trip at the high school, I'd say no. Because I wouldn't know where to go, because it's not that there aren't really great pockets of it being utilized. It's an accessibility problem where it'd be hit or miss. And, and I just, from a pure math standpoint, I, you know, we're talking, let's say seventy, seventy high school staff members. If we were to purchase twelve hundred computers, which we're not, we're only purchasing, I think, six hundred. But if we were to have purchased and asked twelve hundred computers, that would only provide us with thirty-eight class sets. So if you look at that, just the four core curriculum areas, that wouldn't even give each of the four core curriculum areas a cart. I'm just, I'm just thinking from a math standpoint alone of, if we did give, let's say that we have, I wish I had done my homework prior to, but nine English teachers, you know, and nine times, you know, four departments, twenty-four already we're sitting at. And that leaves out things like architecture that needs, or Michael Fetterman's program, which is the graphics art program. Those, those are super antiquated computers, but he has to still use them because not every kid in the class is one-to-one yet.
Can I also just, just add something? Because I think we're, we're at an interesting time too, because we're at the tail end of our one-to-one program. And so, and, and not being a one-to-one school district at this point has, I believe, set us back a little bit. And I think that it's, you know, these computers are an investment, as, as we just talked about. There's, there's, you know, it's an expensive expenditure. And it's, we're at a time in our school district where we have leadership that's changing in our technology department. And, you know, it would be my recommendation that, you know, we, we really need to finish the year with, with this investment and everybody have them. And I think these are great conversations to have over the next several months as we go into the next part of the year with a new director of technology. And, and to have these conversations about where do we, where do we place our investment? I, I think that it is going to, we're gonna fall short if we, and we often do that. You know, we see that finish line and we just stop. And I, and it, it's all, it's very difficult sometimes for us to explain the operational end of what we do and how we do it because, you know, you don't have the opportunity to be in there and see us. It, this, this would be, I, it would be incredibly hard to plan around how we would make these, you know, this type of distribution. So it, being this close and being at the end, these computers will still be brand-new, these new, this new purchase at the end of the year, and I think it becomes part of the repurposing that we do with the computers for what that next, that next stage is gonna look like for our department.
Has there been any discussion about the weight of the computer and the impact that has on students? Cause this was the issue at the middle school, was the weight of the computer. And I can tell you, Nick, who was here earlier making his presentation, already takes two backpacks to school every day because at the high school, we don't have a set of textbooks in the classroom and a set at home. The kids have to schlep their books with them for all of their classes. And this is a really big issue. I think it's part of the reason why the kids that have them now are not utilizing them all of the time.
Sure, I do know it was part of the criteria for the purchase was the weight. Look, I mean, we have some students in here. I, I have heard some lamentations about the weight of their backpacks. I've rarely heard it connected to the computer itself. I mean, the Gigantor biology books, for example, and things like that. I think the middle school doesn't have lockers.
They have some, but they have a set of textbooks in the classrooms and a set right home.
Kids have lockers, some of them utilize them, some of them don't. Look, I, I think by now I would have heard people saying, you can't make me carry around this computer, it's way too heavy by now, but I have not. I mean, ultimately, to me, it's an equity issue. Right now, if we deploy it only to teachers who are willing to use it, we are guaranteeing that a large number of our students will have inequitable classroom experiences, they won't be close. And like, right now, I had a Highlights kid come in to interview me, she opened up her laptop and off she went. If you walk in the second floor patio, you'll see kids working together on tables with their devices. Lunch clubs, people, I went to a club just the other day, a couple of kids opened up their computers, they were taking notes on them. You know, like, what I'm saying is, like, I think we want all the same thing, which is a technological ecosystem where all kids are using them to interact, collaborate and learn what it's like to be on a college campus. All of those, like, I go to my college classes, it was only a couple of years ago now, every single person had a computer. Granted, they were, they were their own, right, I acknowledge that. But they were in a closed ecosystem in terms of the school email, they were in a closed system in terms of the LMS. And right now, I can't tell you how many classrooms I've run to to try to get kids to find out what their Gmail is. It's been abominable. We're still not there. We're literally begging anyone to help us identify exactly who has not used their Gmail. Why can they not use it? Because they don't have a computer. Like, if you have a computer, your sign-in, your single sign-in is also your Google account. So like, we can't close the technological ecosystem, we can't close the circle, in my opinion, without those computers. As long as we don't have them, our kids are not going to own their role in that ecosystem. Where they're gonna have an opportunity to just, depending on which teachers they have, not be involved.
But even if you have, even if all of the kids have laptops, if you have teachers that are not committed to using technology in their classrooms, you still have inequity. And it's not solved by throwing money at buying more laptops. Until the teachers are required, or is there some, there's some type of accountability for the teachers to actually deploy the laptops and the technology in their classrooms, all we're doing is, is giving them expensive tools that they are not able to use. I mean, until we have the ability to say every teacher here will use this technology in their classroom, I feel like it's a cart before the horse.
Mr. Rockman, did you wanna comment? Cause you're lurking up there. Okay, and then Thomas, did you, I haven't spoken yet about this, I'd like to get a word in, but did you also wanna talk?
Yes.
Alright, so say your piece and I'm gonna let JJ speak, okay?
Like, especially as we move toward, like, more towards Google Classroom and stuff, having a computer with you at all times is just, has helped. I mean, I have my computer every day with me. And even though, like, teachers can't currently require it because not every student has one, the ease, like, I have, I can access all my notes from my computer through where teachers upload them. So I can follow the notes, follow the homework and follow what's going on in class through my computer with it and also like, take notes on it. So I think that if, if we have to really think about what we're gonna do moving forward, is it gonna be for the teachers to require it or is it gonna be for allowing the students to have more ease with doing assignments and stuff, so?
Thank you, Thomas. JJ?
It's still a Jewish holiday for me, I actually ran over here, so I can't use the microphone directly right now.
Okay.
But, so I'm just going to say this and hope the microphone picks up enough of it. Right now, to return something Board Member Walker-Human said earlier, which I found really interesting, is that it's, he feels like we're ready-fire, we're ready-fire-aim instead of ready-aim-fire. I agree, half the school has laptops, half the school doesn't. So right now, even if we want a full implementation, we can't do that because only half the school does and we aren't gonna see results. We've already, if you think, if you wanna think of that as a waste, we've already invested half the money. So if we're spending half of the total amount and getting no results, we're in the worst possible situation between not having laptops at all and having full laptops. So we need, so at this point, we need to close the circle. It's also an equality of access issue if only half the school even has the opportunity to engage in the programs on the student end in addition to the teacher end. And on top of that, there was a, I agree, there was a backpack problem with me last year with my laptop, but only because I couldn't fit everything in my specific backpack.
Okay.
So that's just my personal experience, plus the overall mathematics, at least from what I'm standing.
Thank you, JJ. So I'd like to say a couple of things, Mr. Mead. The, the two issues that I'm having, you, I'm sorry? Oh, Christina, you wanna talk? Well, you just got an award, so you can say whatever you want.
Okay, so I just wanna say, like, tell a story about something that happened today, actually. So we had a physics lab today and instead of, so the implementation of the one-on-one laptops, the implication is that everyone will bring the laptop and it'll be ready to use every day. But I believe that's not the case, especially because half the students don't have the laptops. So today in physics, he had to ask us specifically, please bring your laptops for the lab. But, and I believe the weight issue is also a part of this, but most students just didn't bring it. So he had, actually had to bring a cart in because the students didn't bring the laptops that are supposed to be used for situations like this. And I believe part of the issue is that students have different ways of learning. I see some students using the laptops every day to take notes because they're more of a computer person. But I also see a lot of students doing a pen-to-notebook because that's just the way they like to learn and that's a better system of learning for them. So I believe it's an issue of re-gearing ourselves to learn in a more technological way. But also, we need to take into account the equity and the equality of access. Because I think not having a computer, everyone not having a computer is a huge downturn for the teachers to employ the laptops in everyday use. So they would only use it in special situations. And even in special situations, they would have to specifically, specifically ask the students to bring the laptops, which I don't think is the use that we intended it to be for.
So I would then ask if you, how many times have you experienced that? What happened to you today in physics? How many times since we've had computers in the school have you run into that problem where the teacher couldn't do something with computers because not every student had one?
I would say every time that we needed a laptop, that would be the situation. For example, last year in my English class, every time we had to take a vocab quiz, our teacher had to specifically instruct us to bring our laptops. And even then, at least ten of the students wouldn't bring it and we would have to use the carts once again.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Alright, thank you, Christina. So my, my couple of thoughts that I've noted down in this conversation is, Mark, you couldn't tell us right now, the situation that Christina just described, you couldn't tell us how often that actually happens. Right, I mean, if it was happening in half your classes every day, that would be a true shortage of laptops. I mean, that would be a serious issue. But if it happens, you know, once every couple of months where a teacher finds himself, oh, like, you know, now, oh, I'm just reminded now we don't have enough. But I don't think, I wouldn't expect you to answer that question, nobody's given you the time to ask it. So I, I'm gonna assume that, that it's, it's not a common occurrence. Where, and probably it's not a common occurrence because most teachers know that not every student has a computer, so they don't plan on it. So it doesn't, the situation doesn't arise because of the current situation, I understand that. You've made a valid argument for why kids have to have computers in their hands for instructional purposes. I understand that. There's two things I don't understand. This contract that's attached, it seems to be to the agenda, which, which is the purchase contract, it seems to be the same Dells that we have existing.
That's right.
And my question is, when we first bought these Dells,
Right.
The day they arrived on our campus, they were obsolete. And that was more than yesterday, if I can be blunt. So why are we, and I would say it's a year or two years ago when we got those Dells, correct?
Three years.
We ordered them, but I don't know when we got them. So the, it was before you guys, so you've had the Dells for three years?
Yes, I think three years.
Not at the high school.
Okay, so everybody here is saying before us, so it must have been at least three years. So, you spring chickens over here, thank you for rubbing it in. Stop laughing, Jeff Simon. So we're gonna get a computer that's now three years old and that's priced pretty high for an old model. I've, I've, as I'm sitting here, I'm looking at, researching other models of computers, HPs, Acer's, whatever, that are a quarter of the price of this. And for the disposability of it, I'm, I'm, more than anything, I, I respect and recognize what Mr. Mead is trying to do at his high school. The high school is the closest bridge to college learning that kids are gonna realize that they're going to need their computers every day. When they go to college, my son's taking his computer to class every day. My son is using an LMS every day. I get that part of it, okay? What I don't get is ordering computers that are three years old, that are way more expensive than other computers that are out now. So I would, what I would like to see is a different version of this come back to us that really makes practical sense. Because these are really disposable machines. These are disposable machines and we can't be, if we're, if we're not getting, even, even this is disposable. This is outdated, this is outdated, okay? These are outdated and these are top-of-the-market things. These cost more than a hundred dollars. So what I don't wanna support is spending this much money on something that's old. I mean, that makes absolutely no sense. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna move to a one-to-one and we're not really gonna think about carts right now because it's more important to put the computers in the kids' hands and that they have to have them with them, then why don't we get something that's, will carry us another three years? Then be dead on arrival.
This does also include seventeen charging carts. It's a forty thousand dollar line item on the SPO, it does include the carts. So how are we using the carts if the kids are supposed to be taking these with them all the time?
Right, and we learned, we learned from the middle school that, and I'm sorry as well, we learned from the middle school that the one-to-one thing did not work at all for a lot of reasons. But the thing, the other note that I had is, how is our middle school currently using the cart system? How many computers are sitting in those carts not being used? This is the problem, unless we ask the question, the actual question and get the actual answer, which is what all of my colleagues have said in their questions on the agenda, tonight, I'm hearing this. It's not that we're opposed to making sure everybody has what they need and still doing it intelligently and just saying, there's twelve hundred kids by twelve hundred computers, done. Really? Cause you have maybe four hundred computers at the middle school that are sitting collecting dust, nobody knows. We can't, we have to be honest with ourselves. I'm willing to move forward and as quickly as possible, get answers to these questions, make sure we're doing this right and then order the computers. make sure we're doing this right, and then order the computers. But because of the way the technology has been going, I don't want to rush into anything anymore without it being fully vetted. This isn't fully vetted yet, okay? Your need for it is fully vetted. You have made it clear why you need them. But on, on this side of the, of the fence, I don't think this is being done correctly. I, it's, it's, it needs to be revisited to make sure, are we optimizing our current inventory? And that's a very simple question. All you have to do is ask your faculty, the people with the 30 computers sitting in a cart in a middle school science classroom in a corner that they have a plant on, and they're using it as a display stand. And if that's the case, why would we spend the same money here for the same device while that's sitting there not being used? So, and I don't, I'm not directing this to you, Mr. Mead, I'm directing it at staff here.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm sure Mr. Mead didn't come up with the specs.
So if, as I cast my, my vote on this tonight, I want it to be clear that I am not against what you're saying, I'm against how we're putting it in the kids' hands. I think we have to, we have to hit the refresh button on that and do a quick little survey of what's going on in this district to make sure, and what we should have done is really, and I think somebody mentioned it before, start it from the top down. We should have gone from the high school down on this. It's way more important for our high schoolers to have access to everything that they're going to have the minute they go to college, and everything they're going to need to know the minute they go to college. Because we talk about college and career-ready, it's in our mission and vision statement, and yet we continually do everything against that. So I'd like to start actually taking that under consideration. Thank you for my tirade. Go ahead, Mrs. Hacker.
So I'm sure Mr. Um, Mr. Mead probably did not come up with the specs or anything like this, right? You were probably just copying from whatever was, somebody did, right? It wasn't Mr. Mead.
The tech department.
Yes, this came from the tech department.
Are you talking about what's attached?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm guessing based on my conversations, I, no, I did not.
No, right. So, but my question was, um, I do have a question about the contract. I, and just hearing Mr. Margot speak about, um, how quickly, you know, technology becomes outdated, why, why aren't we pursuing a lease, um, contract? Where I know some schools often just lease, and so they have the ability to just, you know, quickly turn around and pick up new technology as their needs become more known or as the time runs further into the future. And so I think that that would be something that is more practical for, for our, for the purposes of, of making this type of purchase or this type of commitment. I, I think that, you know, I want to support you. I mean, I, I don't want it to take a year or six months. I want to do this very quickly because I know that time is of the essence. As you said, the testing's already approaching very quickly. But I would, I would, I would think that anytime you have a lab, you have this problem. Because I think it happens in chemistry, and I'm not sure if it happens in biology, but I have heard from students that when they have lab times, often the teacher asks this type of question to the end, kind of, this, this problem presents itself over and over, not just isolated to physics, but chemistry and, I'm not sure about biology. I don't remember hearing too much about biology, but I could see why we do need to, to have enough computers for all of our students. But let's look into, I, I don't know, is there a problem for looking, looking into a lease program for the high school, or, or are we married to buying?
Um, we weren't, uh, you know, part of the team when this rollout started, but I, I do believe that I saw something in the archives, um, for the technology department that showed, uh, a comparison with, with leases. Uh, so I can look for that again, or, or even just do something that's more updated with the difference between buying and leasing.
Sometimes the, the companies that want, have a different incentive now, that they want to continue your business, so they're, they've, they've been more innovative with coming up with lease, lease, um, opportunities for schools. So if we can, if we can piggyback on something like that, um, I think it's, it can only be advantageous to our district. Dustin?
And I agree, I think we're down the beach actually does.
That's what I.
A lease where it is a three-year cycle.
Camry, I just do.
So the third graders get the laptop, and then they return it as a fifth grader. The sixth grader gets the laptop and returns it as an eighth grader, so it's theirs for the full extent, three years. And then the ninth grader gets it and then has the possibility to purchase it as a 12th grader to take it on, even though it gets a little obsolete, but be able to utilize and pull any of the former papers and stuff like that they've been saving on for over the past couple of years. So it's a really good point to look into.
Mm-hmm.
I know that they would share that model with us.
Great.
Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, as like teachers, teachers can obviously require it right now, but they already have a lesson plan not including laptops. So it's kind of hard for them to have, have a plan with laptops without having them. So I think, yeah.
No, that argument was really well made tonight. I mean, as far as the professional development, Mr. Mead, you really made a great point. You have to have the structure, the infrastructure there before you can train. Because teachers have to be able to know that that's available to them if they're going to implement it. That makes perfect sense. And I, and like my colleague said, I don't want to, I don't want to delay this any longer than it, than it has to be, but I want to do it right. And I think we've rushed through a lot of this stuff with technology, and we've tripped a lot. And if we don't learn our lessons from it and keep making the same mistakes, what does that say about us?
Right. The, the contract that you see there, uh, sounds like they were part of the old technology plan that just sunsetted. So they were the, they were probably there at the beginning of that technology plan. So, I mean, I think it's a cautionary tale about having a plan and then moving too slow because now they're obsolete before we ever even got them. So I hear that. And I, I do not want to make an unwise investment. All I'll say is the network that we have at the school, the infrastructure, the repair plans, all those things are based on a specific model. For example, if you bring your Mac onto our campus, it does funky stuff, like it just stops working, the network collapses on it. I think we, again, in this time of transition leadership, we need to make sure that the device we get is going to work in our ecosystem. And I think, I think ecosystem is the, the really important word, just like anything. You can't put a polar bear in the Sahara, right? Like, what we choose to get might be a better value, might be a better product, and obviously I'm all for wise expenditures, but it would be really embarrassing if we switched to Chromebooks and they weren't picking up the Wi-Fi in three-quarters of the classes. Uh, that would be worse, right? So that's the one caution I'm going to throw out there, not being a networks, boxes and wires fellow, but knowing enough about it to know that the ecosystem was backward planned for these devices. Is there a, like, a simpatico device out there? I'm sure. But if we're not methodical about it, I, I think we could end up in a worse spot. And if I could say one other thing, um, that Christina brought up, um, kids not bringing, I mean, most of us in this room maybe even have kids, but we've certainly worked with kids. Kids need routine desperately. They need habit. And at first, they don't need, like, we want, we try to give them the why, but we all know it doesn't penetrate, right? Like, you give them the why, and like, they need the routine, and they eventually understand the why. The reason Christina's classmates, I think, aren't bringing the device, and I got to assume that Christina's classes are pretty high-flying, right? The reason that the kids aren't bringing the devices is because they're not habituated to it. They're not habituated to opening them. Like, I think we almost need to make the habit and create the ecosystem before the expectation that it's happening everywhere. One last concern, it's not the end of the world, um, we have a very ambitious pivot going on right now with the LMS, right? I have no doubt that my teachers are capable of making this change. Whether or not it's going to be a spiritual drain is a different question, but the, their ability to learn Ares Gradebook, I am confident they can learn it. My concern would be more in the, okay, but we're also going to be pairing Google Classroom, right? And the expectation, at least for Ms. Decaturl and for Nancy, is that we are building their capacity in Google, Google Classroom. But I don't know to what degree they will be using it while we're, while we're doing it, which goes back to the PD thing. So, you know, this kind of ambitious, not, it's not ambitious, but it's, it's abrupt, you know, like this change to Ares and Google Classroom without the classrooms and the computers, I think, will be to some degree a hindrance of that progress. I, I don't think it'll be a non-starter, I think they can do it, but I think it's going to add to the feeling of, yeah, of, of difficulty. So I just wanted to bring that up.
I, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, that was it.
Okay. So, um, what I'm hearing from my colleagues, and, and I want to know if we can answer this question, and you make a good point about the ecosystem as well, um, and I'm not looking to totally upset that, but I'm sure, I'm sure that the, uh, this Dell, whatever it's called here, this one particular model, the Dell, is not the, is not the only computer that'll work in the ecosystem.
Sure.
If it is, then we really made a huge mistake, okay? And I, I would hate to think that. And, and, and I know what you mean about the Macs being wonky, and I get that.
Yeah.
And I also would wonder why we don't have a BYOD policy as universities do, but that's a whole discussion for another game. I guess, um, universities don't have to be as equitable as public schools do. So, what I'm hearing is, I would like to know, before I move ahead with a purchase of any magnitude, whether it's this one or we get a better deal, is, um, how, how the, the, um, how, how the middle school is using the cart system right now? How many teachers, how many of those computers at the middle school are being used? If, you know, three-quarters of the, of the computers are being used, I'd leave it alone and realize everybody will play catch-up eventually, and, and probably be inclined to get the high school whatever it needs, as long as we know that this is the best deal, and I don't think this purchase agreement. My biggest issue with this agenda item tonight is the purchase agreement. It's not the one-to-one, it's the purchase agreement. We voted for the one-to-one. We did that a couple of years ago, right? So that's, that's, I'm not going to be hypocritical about that. What I am going to say is, I don't want to invest, you know, through, almost $800,000 on something that's, that's three years old, um, just because it was easy to draw up the agreement. So I'd like to know, how many computers are, are being used, utilized at the middle school, and can we get a better deal? Does that make sense, colleagues? And get those two questions answered, and have this come back to us as soon as staff is ready. What? What, well, Dr. Bergy was going to look into the lease and see if that's still the better way to do it or not. And I remember that conversation, actually, and it was not, it was not lucrative for us to do the lease, if I remember correctly.
But there are companies, I mean, there are companies.
Right, but if it's changed.
Right. And, and sometimes they will, they, they have an incentive to work with you and make some investment because they want your.
Continual business. Yeah, so I would, I would ask that. I would want to find out what's going on with the middle school computers, what kind of deal we can get, and, and answer the, the lease question.
But I think the middle school, you have to separate the middle school from the high school, I think.
No, but, but what I'm saying is, if we have, if we have, you know, seven dozen computers sitting at the computers not being used, let's get them into the junior's hands, you know?
I agree. And I also, in addition to those two, those are great start questions, but I also want to know, how many teachers at the high school are already committed to technologies and their, technology in their classrooms? And how many outliers are there? And how many are in the middle saying, well, if we had it, we'd use it, but we don't have it?
It's, you can ask that question, but my issue with the answer to that question is, the high school is technically a revolving door. And who may not be using it this year might not be here next year, and then you have to build a culture of, this is what we do at the high school.
But if that's the case, then we also have to have some way of measuring and, and moving on accountabilities.
When everybody has them, you can. That's what Mr. Mead is saying.
But that's part of the plan. I think that needs to be part of the plan.
But he said that right up front. He said he can't even hold, hold staff accountable for implementing programs because not every kid can use them when you have classes. The one thing you could say about the middle school is, we have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and it's pretty separated, and we don't have a lot of mixture except for electives. But, so, I, Dr. Bergy, are you clear with the questions that?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yes.
So let's, I, time is of the essence on this. I want, I don't want Mr. Mead to have any reason to flounder on this with, and his staff and the students here, so let's get answers. The fastest you get it back to us, the faster we'll make a decision.
Great. I think that we can do that right away.
So what I'd like to do, if I can, colleagues, is, um, did you make the motion?
You, oh, yeah, I made it. No.
She made it, I seconded. Okay. Um, I would recommend we withdraw the motion, table the item.
Okay.
Oh, no, opposite. You made the motion.
Then I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw the motion. Do you accept that?
I accept that.
Okay, motion is withdrawn. Now I'm going to move to table this item to, as soon as staff has the questions answered and is ready to go.
Do you have any questions for us, Mr. Mead?
I agree.
No, I don't, I don't. I, I thank you for all of your support, I really do.
Okay. If it was $50,000, it'd be a different conversation, but it's almost a million, so I think we're a little more hesitant.
Yeah, I was doing the math. There are about 1,600, maybe like 1,300-plus carts, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, the, the contract is for about $800,000-plus, so.
Thanks.
Okay. So I'm, I'm, once again, I'll make a motion to table this item until staff has it prepared to come back with our questions answered.
I second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kraus-Hauer. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mead, students who participated in the conversation. I appreciate that. And staff, thank you very much. I just, I just, I think we're all, after what's been going on, we're all a little gun-shy with technology, so we want to make sure we get it right. And that's, that's, I think, an honest assessment and practical at the same time. Okay. That concludes the consent calendar. Um, we're going to move on. Are you ca, do you want to see the report? Or do you want to go to the voting items?
No, voting items, whatever.
I'm sorry?
There you go. Just leave it.
Just keep, okay. So, so let me, Dr. Bergy, let me go to your report, and then if it starts getting, it's 6:20, so, um, I want to make sure we have enough time for the rest of the voting items.
Okay. Make sure you don't want to do those first?
No. How, how long, how long is your presentation?
It's not very, too long, but I want to make sure.
Okay, no, you could do it, because I think, I think, um, we'd be happy to hear about it.
Great.
Yeah, it's not, there's not that many things left to vote on, so I think we're okay.
So my report, your presentation, or?
Yeah, you can make your report. You're, I'm not thinking you're going to take up too much time, Thomas. You're not, tonight's not the song and dance number, right? Okay.
So I just want to talk to you a little bit about, um, an expectation and change that, that we brought, uh, over a year ago when we were moving towards Schoology and the elimination of one of our gradebook systems, and that being Jupiter. Um, and so through the, the Schoology saga and issues, um, you know, we, uh, we were at a point where we had just had enough of a system that wasn't working, and I'm really appreciative of the staff and, and our board and our cabinet, and our teachers who just kept pushing through every time we said, we, we think we are going to make this work. And, um, and so, uh, we had already made the expectation that we would not be looking every time we said, we, we think we are going to make this work. And, um, and so, uh, we had already made the expectation that we would not be looking at continuing Jupiter over a year ago. And, um, and that expectation is going to continue. And I, I realize that with the elimination of Schoology, um, that that provided kind of an open door or an, an opportunity for some people that wanted to continue with it. Uh, but, but our expectation has been that, that it is something that we're not going to continue for a variety of reasons that I, I will quickly go over. Um, just, uh, it's, it's important to start with our vision and mission that we've just, uh, looked at and we've had an opportunity to make revisions as we begin to, to align our work. Um, it's important that, and critical, that, that we do this in so many ways, including the technology, which is very reflective of the conversation that we just had about the one-to-one. Just quickly, I'm going to go over, uh, some things here about, uh, you know, kind of where we're going and why we're going in that direction. And then I'll end with some costs, which are pretty critical to this, this example. Um, you know, I do acknowledge the amount of change from reconfiguration to technology to just, just in general, teaching and learning. Um, you know, there is no industry around that keeps changing and evolving as much as education. Um, everybody's time matters. I, and I understand there are different things happening at different levels, at elementary, middle, and high school. Um, but everybody in some way has increased their, their ability to work with our technology, whether it's in the classroom or from an operational perspective in our computers. Um, our state mandated system for, uh, really, everything that's important to the man, the mandated reporting information with, um, with all of the data is our, our student information system. It's really, it's the base. It's, um, you know, it's the foundation of our organization. Um, and it's Ares. Uh, Ares is, uh, it, it used by, um, most of the school districts in the state of California. It's very robust. Um, and it does have a gradebook feature that has also kept up with a, a lot of the evolving with so many things going on with LMSs and other, uh, technical software that's available for us. Um, it, it works seamless with Google Classroom. And so, uh, many of our teachers have already been traveling in that path. So with the elimination of Schoology and a slight adjustment, uh, at, at this time, we're going to continue on with that path with Google Classroom and also Ares, and Ares Gradebook. Uh, the communication that we have through the school district is using our Gmail. And again, it's a, it's a seamless transition and interface with Ares and Google Classroom. So, you know, the question here is, uh, you know, really, people are asking, you know, why not, uh, you know, why not, you know, why are we not going to keep Jupiter and, and why are we going to move to Ares? Well, Ares is not new to any of us. Um, there's so many things that, that we already do in Ares. Um, and many of our teachers are already using the Ares Gradebook with some success. Uh, it's, it's really important that, just as I mentioned with our mission and our vision, that we, we, we continue to align what we're doing. Um, you know, simplify what we're doing. Uh, the one log-on is really important for us. Um, as you can see, Mr. Mead mentioned before, you know, some students that, that they don't even have their, uh, their district Gmail email address. And, you know, it's October. Um, you know, we, we have to start moving towards a more, uh, a, a simple system, but a connected system as well. Um, we have to be more data-driven. We have to look at what analytics are available. We have to look at, uh, you know, maintaining this ethos with, for an LMS. That's really what our job, uh, is, is to do with our, our mission and vision. Uh, we have to be looking at what's happening and preparing our kids to be career, uh, and college-ready. Um, the WASC assessment was, uh, really eye-opening and rewarding with the work that Mr. Mead and his staff is doing. Um, one of the things that, that was noted was increasing the use of our summative informative assessments. And these are some of the things that, that we can also do in Ares. Um, this slide, I just want to end with that, you know, these are, these are not new programs. Uh, so many people in our district, so many teachers are already using them. Um, we have students that are using them, parents are using Ares. So it's, it's a system that is sound, uh, it's seamless. And so many people in our school district are already using it with great success. So I won't go over too much of this slide because it's, uh, it, it's, it's, it's really driven by a lot of standards, by educational code, uh, but also, uh, the, the, the types of compliance that is expected of school districts when we are looking at student privacy and, um, you know, protecting students. Um, so whether it's, uh, you know, legislation and, um, you know, the direction from Kappa and, um, SOPIPA, which are, are educational standards that are required, we, we have to make sure that whatever third-party system that we're using is not only, you know, compatible, but, but also, you know, is this going to be supported by ed code and also the state? Um, and so what we're finding is, sometimes with these third-party systems, um, that they aren't always compliant. Um, I will say that, um, you know, the, the pedic, pedic, pedagogical implications, um, that with, with using Jupiter, uh, just as an example, is that, that there's so much more than just housing quizzes. And in housing this information, as we move towards an LMS, the combination of working in Google Classroom and what Ares Gradebook has to offer, um, far outweighs currently what's happening in Jupiter's system. So this is a, a heavy lift right now with the Jupiter grades to Ares. Uh, we have very limited staff members that actually have the ability to do the transfer. So teachers working in Jupiter grades, uh, they, they put their grades into Jupiter and they sit there and they, they, they wait for uploading. And they wait for someone to, um, upload and then shift that information to, uh, into Ares. Because everything has to be in Ares. Every state report, all of the mandated reporting, all of that is through our Ares system. And so, it, what's happening is that teachers are, are putting grades into the Jupiter system and they're accountable for those grades, but someone else, and no administrator is doing this at the high school, is responsible for making sure that that transfer happens from Jupiter into our Ares system. So it does remove some of that accountability because the transfer is not happening and it's not in real time. Um, and there is a cost to have a staff member do this for every grading period. Um, as I said before, we're already a G-suite district, uh, using email, uh, Google Drive, this type of collaborative work. Um, and so this is a very, um, natural way to go, um, as we are going through this transition with technology and, um, a new, uh, Director of Technology, um, that this is a very, uh, comfortable path. Uh, and it's a path that we were going down already. Um, I do know though, and I will say this, that, that for those teachers that do have some, um, some work that's, that's stored into Jupiter, there, there is an extraction, um, that it's, it's not super simple and it, 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 there, there is a time, there's a lot of clicks, um, but it can be done. Um, you know, I have up here, you know, it, it, and I'm using Mr. Mead as the example of, of taking two and a half hours to extract 250 pods, which is a lot. I, I wouldn't say that a lot of people have 250 pods. But, um, you know, it can be done and this information can be moved out of Jupiter. So this login loop, um, and what's important about this, it goes back to what I was talking about before with the, uh, single sign-on. And also, um, keeping this, this, the circular rotation that is supported and, um, by, by, by law, uh, by compliance with online privacy, um, but also keeping it easy and keeping it within our own system. Um, as you can see on the right, uh, it just starts with our Google Classroom, um, with our Gmail address and our students using their district email address. Um, the Jupiter on the right-hand side towards the bottom, um, the, currently with Jupiter, students opt into Jupiter and they are using their personal email addresses. And so, um, that creates, uh, a, a, a problem when, um, that, with, the, the district has to be able to have discoverable information. The, the district has to be able to monitor what's happening when, not only with grades, but also with just communication, when students are communicating with teachers and other staff members. And so, there is, you know, you, there, there might be an argument that says, well, force every student to, you know, you have to use your BHUSD address. Um, this is a third-party system, so, so students can go in on their own and, and put in the email address that they want. So it, it becomes problematic because there, there's no way that we, uh, have any ability to, to know what's happening with the communication, um, with the third-party system. Um, going up towards then the left-hand side, um, you know, this is, we, this robust system that we have, it, it, you know, every student has to use their BHUSD email address, which they will also, it'll be their same sign-on for Google Classroom. But there, there are, and I, and I think some, some hesitation by some people with the Ares Gradebook is they remember it from years ago. And, um, it's, it's a completely sys, different system today than it was several years ago. So the things that people were doing with Jupiter with, you know, making sure that assignments are on there, um, sending communication, you know, parents actually have an opportunity to create their own parameters. Do you want to get grades, um, on, you know, sent to you every Friday? Um, but it's, it's real-time and when teachers put in their own grades, it's, it's uploaded immediately. Um, in, in addition, it's a system where it's, you know, kind of a one-stop. So it's, you know, teachers are using Ares for attendance, uh, if there's behavior data. Um, you know, food services, state test scores, you know, everything is in one system. Uh, including some pretty incredible analytics, which is just not available in Jupiter, uh, which I'll show you in just a second. And so, and this is what the seamless, um, integration with, um, our G-suite, uh, and, and Google Classroom. And all of this, and this is, I can't underestimate, you know, I can't, telling you that, that it's, that, that the compliance and the, the monitoring that's expected of us as a school district can happen if we have this type of login loop. So we all have this responsibility, um, you know, to, to put in information. Teachers should be putting in, uh, their own information, as I mentioned. Um, you know, we're really dependent on just a few people that, that do this transfer. Um, and, and that is, you know, you, sometimes you have to wait for that to occur. Um, but every teacher should be looking at tracking and analyzing and drilling down in, in different data. Understanding, um, you know, drilling down into, after giving a, a test or, you know, looking at attendance data. Um, or, you know, our EL coordinator looking at our EL students and their performance. Um, you know, right at your fingertips, right in the same system. Um, you know, we, we're not aware of people that are using the Jupiter analytics currently because, uh, they, you know, they, 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 that seems to be an outdated piece, is, is that, the, the analytics piece in Jupiter. Um, so what we've seen in Ares is this, uh, this, this real opportunity to get back to a cutting-edge, um, environment that's connected to everything that we do every day. Just quickly, some, some of the analytics, um, you know, what, what's missing in Jupiter is this ability to drill down. Um, these are just examples of, and we just quickly picked attendance, um, that, that you can actually, not only are they, um, you know, really, you know, good graphs, like the, with, that they're, you know, either, it's great color, it's, it's great categories. You, you basically get to choose how you want to categorize things and, and, and put things into reports. But even more than that, you can drill down, you can click on them, and you can actually then get to the individual student by clicking on them. So it, it, they drill down and again, it's real-time. Um, some of the things that, that are not happening currently, if, if we wanted to do a, a query for lists, like, uh, let's say I'm a, a, a school counselor and I want to look at anybody that's in my caseload that's, has a D or an F, you know, I, you can't do that from Jupiter. And, um, but you can do that with Ares and say, look, I want to pull this group because I want to meet with them because there's still three weeks left. And, um, you know, so it's, it's creating that type of, of reporting. Um, even for athletics, uh, you know, just, just who is, you know, who's passing, who's not passing, who needs help. So it, it just goes back to the, the system that we're already using and that we're already paying for. Uh, that has all of these things, uh, you can see in red that, that are on there. Um, the timeline now, uh, we are, uh, obviously migrating away from some of the things that were in Schoology to Ares Gradebook and, and, uh, Google Classroom. Um, each school site is dedicating specific time for teachers to continue this. Uh, the middle school is providing this on the 17th and the 24th. Um, on the 23rd, uh, Professional Development Day, thank you, School Board, um, that they, uh, the teachers will be training and they will be in training, doing, and, and working with Ares Gradebook, um, and then beginning to migrate some of their things to Google Classroom. Um, you know, the needs of each school are different, but, um, you know, each PD date will be tailored toward, towards those needs. Um, and, and this is just some other timeline things about when Jupiter's going to sunset and, and how people can still access, kind of on the backend, some of the things if, if they've left them in, uh, Schoology. A big part that's been left out of the conversation is parents and students. And the, the ease of this app is pretty amazing, um, to be able to, uh, really customize what you're looking at and when you're looking at it. So that's a, that's a wonderful feature that keeps evolving, um, uh, over time. The communications piece as well. I know that people like Jupiter because of the communication. Uh, this communication is compliant. The Jupiter communication is not compliant. This is a communication that has various options through, through Ares itself or through Ares communication. Uh, and finally, I want to end with, uh, just the, you know, we were talking about expense before, expenditures. And, you know, it's, we, we have a system, a third-party system that not everybody uses. And so we've had a teacher that, 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 we're utilizing part of their teaching assignment. Um, and you can see over the last, um, you know, seven years, that, um, you know, we've, we've, we've had a staff member who has actually, uh, used either one-fifth or two-fifths of their teaching assignment to, uh, to, to really run the program. So if you look at that over the last seven, eight years, we're, it's about $253,000 as an investment in what we use as a resource to, to pay our teachers. I'm not saying that the teacher got that, but, you know, instead of having a, a classroom, you know, we, we have a teacher that's actually, you know, in charge of, of administering Jupiter grades. And then finally, just, uh, you know, it, just the system itself, the system itself, just to, uh, to, to, to take advantage of the software, just to have it for, again, not every teacher, um, over the last, uh, seven, eight years, is, uh, almost $100,000 just to have and keep Jupiter. And so it is, uh, been our, our, our direction moving forward, that we, we have to start aligning our systems. And we, we have to, regardless of, of our, of our path, and it's been bumpy with, with technology, we have to simplify what we're doing. And this is the best direction to go in, moving forward. And, uh, and, and so eliminating Jupiter at the end of, uh, this year or semester, uh, is, uh, is really what's, what's appropriate. We're going to provide the necessary training, um, in the next few weeks and then any support beyond. Um, but the elimination of, of Jupiter will happen at the end of December. And I just wanted to share that with the board.
Colleagues, any, any comments, uh, quickly for Dr. Bergy? And we have a few more voting items we have to get to quickly, so.
Um, thank you for the presentation. I have comments in my report, so I'm just going to save that for later. But everything was laid out perfectly and I thank you for doing that.
Thanks.
Yeah, this was, this was great. And I can tell you personally, I think Ares is remarkable. I love the app. It's so clear, it's so easy to use, much easier for my kids to use too, so I'm, I'm a big fan.
Um, as we transition to Google, I guess I was just going to ask, um, are teachers pretty, I mean, what would you say? You think the teachers at the high school are using it, Mr. Mead, or it's a mixed bag, like everything?
Of course, technologically at our high school, it's all kind of a mixed bag right now. I mean, I think we've kind of been talking about that, but when, when, when Schoology was coming out, you know, at the park.
Sorry, Mr. Mead, can I put you up in the microphone? Thank you.
I just want to know, like, where are we, like, how comfortable or difficult is the program? Is it very user-friendly?
So, uh, just so you know, since 2004, I got my master's degree in EdTech and I've used Moodle, which is an LMS in my classroom the entire time. So I kind of have a, a LMS mindset. Um, so I'm all for it. Um, I'm all for it just from like, I, I think it, it offers, teaches a growth mindset. Like you build your class, you make improvements and next year you bring it over and you improve that. So your class, like visibly, is always improving. I think it's awesome. Um, I know for a fact that a lot of our teachers during this Schoology process were wistfully thinking of the Google trainings that we had had over the years. Um, a lot of the people who chose to dive into Schoology and own it had not very long ago been real fans of Google. Um, we have some teachers who are, are really, I don't want to say expert, although they might be, but certainly like well-versed in it. Long story short, I knew that when Schoology was falling apart, if we had to pick something where there's already buy-in on our campus, I think Google Classroom is that. We have onsite leaders who I think are going to own this transition in time. Um, so, you know, but it's not everywhere right now. But, um, I think if you're going to choose one LMS where there's comfort already at the high school, where there's training already at the high school, not universally and not equally, this was the one LMS where you could have transitioned quickly to it. If that answers your question.
Yeah, an LMS, um, so Google is not precisely an LMS, but it, it has the potential to become a platform like an LMS? Or, or have they done that already? I know that they were launching.
I, I would be interested to know why it wouldn't be an LMS.
So there are, there are two things in place. So we utilize Google as our Gmail system, but it's a Google Suite in which we have. So everything with, from the drive to Google Classroom, Google Classroom would be considered an LMS within that whole suite that we have access to.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, it's, the gradebook isn't quite, I think, ultimately where it's going to be. I mean, the one thing about Google is you can count on them to keep, I mean, it would not astonish me at all if in three years, Google is the most cutting-edge of them all, but they're not there yet. But as recently as a year ago, there was no way to attach a graded assignment in Google Classroom to Ares Gradebook.
There was no way.
There was no way. Um, now there is. I mean, that's in the last year. Who knows what they're going to do in the next year? They're very responsive. So I, I would say like, I, I think I need to be frank and open. Um, the, there was, I think, a lot of concern about Schoology. Um, the way it was sinking being the main thing, the gradebook being a second thing. And those were probably the two biggest things that could have been.
Right.
Been ineffective. Um, the, I think the teachers would be feeling like, yes, that was the right choice. I think they are. I think the suddenness of the change and then, you know, like the, the need to change still in January is causing some of them some dismay. I think it's my job, it's my team's job to let them know they're going to get the training and it's going to be okay. I think some of them right now are a little panicked about the sudden shift. And I think it's important to acknowledge that. That said, the LMS, if we were going to choose one to reduce that concern, that fear, that change panic, I think the only one we could have chosen was Google. It also happens to be one we're already paying for. So I think the choice was a wise one for our, our LMS going forward. I don't think there's any question about that. I, I haven't really heard like, oh god, no, please not Google Classroom. Quite the opposite. Um, if you're hearing any concern out there, I think, from what I've heard, it's more related to the timeline than it is the, the decision by itself. You do have some Jupiter grade diehards, and I'll be. You do have some Jupiter Grade diehards, and I'll be happy to speak to that as well, but I think by and large, that the choice of the LMS that we have selected, I think that's a decently popular one. I think it's more like, how am I gonna be ready to deploy it by January? Am I gonna get enough training? What about all these classes that don't have computers? Those are things that are coming up, and I think they're real. Doesn't mean we can't get there, but it's my job and my team's job to support them and let them know it's gonna be okay, because I actually believe it is. I really do. But I think it's important to note their feeling, and I think reasonably, like, what just happened, now I gotta hurry and change. Like, I think these are very fair feelings that they're having.
And I think for students, I know that when you look at the history as to why Jupiter was adopted, I think there was a consensus amongst the parent, like, the parents really pushed for, they wanted a mechanism that kept them informed as to how their student was doing in school. So that by the time that report card arrived, it wasn't too late for the parents to intervene. And I think students generally really do depend on Jupiter for that purpose, is to see, how did I do my test? Did my assignment get counted? And so I think as long as we have something that captures that in real time, all the time.
It does.
I think, yeah, then that's really, I think, in a sense, what parents, I think, would want, and I think students also, and of course, there's the user side of it, which you just spoke to.
And if I may, I think from what I've seen from parents, like, you know, a lot of our PTSA parents, the app seems to be really good for them. And by and large, I've heard nothing but like, I like it, and, you know, if you want to know a little bit more specifics about Jupiter and that, you can go to the website on your phone. You can go to the full site, right, for a little more, but for the most part, one of the things that's cool about the Ares app that you don't have in Jupiter Grades is you can find out your kid's attendance, has he been tardy this week, you know, like, so those are, it can do some, but some things we love about Jupiter Grades, Ares isn't gonna do, period. And, but I think for the parents, for the student immediately, and for the student ultimately, I think these are no-brainers, but I do think we also need to acknowledge that, from a teacher's perspective, there is going to be, for lack of a better technological way, more clicks. They're going to have to click more to do the same. It's not, I've counted it, I guess this is a matter of subjectivity, it's not an oppressive additional amount of clicks, but every click, when you have 150 kids, I mean, they add up, right? So I think a little empathy in that direction on my part and our part goes a long way. I don't think it means that we haven't made the right choice. In fact, I genuinely believe we've made the right choice in my bones. I think this is right. It's just, and I think kids and parents will buy in quick. I just want to encourage the teachers that we understand that this is a tight window. We also believe that we can get them there. I hope they trust us, but.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Breckie. And just while you were talking, I didn't want to be rude, I know I was on my phone. I was actually downloading the Ares app and signed in and checked on my kid's grades, and I'm not gonna say which one, but econ, econ, let's get it together. Okay.
Can I add just one quick thing? I know we're rushing for time. One of the most important things is just this responder group that we have, with so many people that are using Ares and Ares Gradebook, you know, having this responsive group when it comes to this evolution in the analytics part. When you have that database of people to make all of these things happen, we have it, and we have their attention, and most importantly, we ask the question from the beginning, you know, does this, does Ares Gradebook, you know, does that, does it sync well with Ares? And we actually reached out to school districts, so it was the question that we didn't ask with Schoology, and I just talked to alone, it was Manhattan Beach, Palos Verdes Peninsula, and also Las Vergenes, their teachers are using it, and it's working.
They're using Ares and Google Classroom?
And Ares Gradebook.
Good, okay.
That combination.
Yeah, like I said, and I guess we can get, maybe get notices out to parents to start downloading this app. I know you put it up there, but something that would get them used to it, because it's, I just looked at it, and it's a piece of cake. Your kid, if you know your password, you sign in, your kids come right up, you can go right to their grades, and that's what parents want. How are my kids doing, and what'd they do on the test yesterday? It's very accessible.
Yeah, like, maybe it should be on the website, just an invitation to parents to download, maybe?
Thomas, I'm gonna come back to you in a second. I just need to finish the voting items while I still have quorum. So we're gonna move over to Human Resources 12A. Can I get a motion for 12A?
I make a motion to adopt, wait, number, oh, is it, I'm sorry, not even there.
HR is the first one.
Human Resources Memorandum of Understanding between Beverly Hills Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, CSEA. Just a second.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to business and finance, 13A.
I make a motion to reject claim number 576521.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Shall I continue?
A lot of feedback, so I apologize.
I make a motion for approval of amendment number three to the agreement buy-in between the City of Beverly Hills ARV Inc. and the Beverly Hills Unified School District for operation and abandonment services of oil and gas wells at 9865 Olympic Boulevard within the City of Beverly Hills.
I'll second that. Jeff, quick question, what well are we on?
14.
14. 13's done. Awesome. Yay.
I had a question on that one, too, earlier. Did you get the question on that?
I'm not.
No? I think I did, too. One for the BGA thing, and then separate.
That's okay. So my question was just more general, because I think I was listening to a city council meeting, and there was a discussion about, you know, where we are with repayment, and so are we, have we repaid any of the invoices that we've received from the district, from the city? Or are they still fronting, I mean, I'm kind of...
The city currently is paying the invoices currently, and we're working on developing an escrow agreement by which we can reverse the city.
Okay, great, because they were just kind of asking, and I thought that should be, I mean, to themselves, and I didn't know the answer to their question or discussion. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 13C.
I make a motion for approval and adoption of resolution 2019-2020-005 to amend the district conflict of interest code.
I will second. Any questions on this?
Do you have any questions?
No, just cleaning up my image. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Planning and Facilities, 14A.
Move approval of agreement with Moss Levy and Hartson LLP to conduct a school facility program bond fund audit for Horace Mann School Building A.
Just a second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Looking forward to their wonderful work again. Okay, and then finally, 14B.
Remove approval of rental agreement with Sterling Venue Ventures for the Savon Theater for the Beverly Hills High School Spring Musical.
I'll second for that. This is the musical, the main musical's gonna be at the Savon this year. Drawing that one out, that'll be interesting. It'll be a different venue for the kids to perform at, probably more in line with being in Peters than they've had in the past, so that'll be good for them. Any other questions on that? Sure.
Was the $45,000 already allocated towards having a replacement theater, or is this...
We had a long time ago have known that we would have to do something about performance space. I don't know the amounts that have been put aside. It's a good question, but I know that we talked about, you know, the performance tent, and we had put a little bit of money aside for that, but then we had to put that aside because of DSA approvals. So I think this falls within, if our timeframe on the auditorium goes as expected, this should fall within about the same amount that we would have expected to pay, you know, in outsourcing our performance venues as opposed to bringing something in. So I know they're trying to work within that, and if you need me to slow down, I will. I'm just trying to accommodate your schedule, so.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, opposed? No. Motion carries. So now we have some board policies. Colleagues, what we could do is we can make a motion to just, because of the interest of time, and because we have two colleagues not here, I would like to just approve the first reading, not waive the first reading, go to a second. If we could just, that way, our colleagues and all of us will have time to really review these and work on them with staff before the second comes back. Does that, does that work, Mr. Roach? Okay. So if you would like to ask questions, perhaps we can put all of these on the table at once, ask our questions, approve the first reading only, not waive it, and then that way it'll give us ample time to make sure we can continue the conversation before we approve a second So if you agree with that, you can make a motion to approve the first readings of all of these policies. If not, we can go one by one, and you can ask questions.
I make a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, E of board policies. First reading of administrative regulation 3314, payment for goods and services. First reading new administrative regulation 3314.1, district issued credit card use. First reading of board policy 3350, travel expenses. First reading new administrative regulation 3350, travel expenses. First reading new exhibit 3350, travel expenses.
I'll second that. Okay, questions on any of these, please?
Are we gonna get another chance to tackle up this a little more at the next meeting, or do we have to make any amendments now, or any suggestions?
No, we actually can take as much time as we want before we bring back the second reading and approval. So we can bring it back for a discussion only and not a vote. We don't have to bring it back for a vote. You can ask staff questions as much as you want to make sure it's vetted out. This is just to get the ball rolling. The board had given direction that we need to have tighter controls on this stuff, so I appreciate the department, Mr. Roach, your department, in getting this back to us in a timely manner, so that we can try to put some stipulations on how we spend some of the money in these areas. But, yeah, I will guarantee that our other colleagues will want to opine on this as well, so.
What I'll do is, I really didn't get a chance to really write down my questions on these policies, but I just, I'm assuming that these are comparable policies to other districts, and that the finance committee, I think you told me, or I think Dr. Breckie mentioned that they were weighing in, so they've seen all this?
Yeah.
Okay. And so I'll look at them, and it looked really on target, so, but if I have any questions, I'll send them your way, so that maybe at the next meeting.
And I, because you gave a thumbs up, but I don't know if the camera was on you, Mr. Roach, is the, has the finance committee already weighed in on all of this?
Yes, I just want to thank the finance committee for their work on these policies and regulations over the course of the last couple months. So they've seen these, and they've given their approval to bring these forward to the board.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So with that, just approving the first reading only. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you, staff, for this and answering the questions. Okay, we're gonna jump back to Mr. Cooper, because I was informed that we have to have three to continue the meeting, so.
All right.
Your report, sir.
Perfect. All right, so I first want to comment on not only the first Beverly Vista Middle School homecoming, but also the high school's homecoming. The Beverly Hills High School football team won their homecoming on September 27th and improved their record to three and two. Both homecomings were able to showcase the many programs offered at both the middle school and high school, such as dance, cheer, band, and other athletic teams. Both had amazing turnouts and were lively with spirit. Using the spirit, especially from the Beverly Hills High School homecoming game as momentum, I wanted to continue to improve the spirit at the high school. On a separate note, since the beginning of the school year, there has been much discussion about online grading systems and learning management systems. As of now, there is only Ares and Google Classroom with Jupiter Grades sunsetting after December. I have used Jupiter Grades since 2013 and have been a fan of it, but I'm the first one to say that moving forward with Ares and Google Classroom isn't everyone's best interest. I fully understand the timeline for making this change, and it's difficult for everyone, including teachers, students, administration, and parents, but after much discussion with students, I've realized that there is a lot of confusion where to check one's grades or how to best communicate with teachers. Ares is the district's student information session, as we've confirmed that, and has been for more than 20 years. As a district, we have not used Ares to its full extent, and I believe we can continue to. In addition, we already have a Google suite, which includes Google Classroom. Might as well use the programs we already have instead of adding more. Continuing to use Jupiter Grades creates this confusion, is not connected to students' BHUSD email or Google account. By continuing Jupiter also, we create yet another login instead of just the Google account. Even though change is difficult and taking away one of the most integral parts of our grading system, Jupiter is not easy, I am fully confident that the use of Ares and Google Classroom is beneficial to all. I also want to highlight an amazing and very important program at the high school, which is Normanade. Normanade provides counseling, conflict mediation, crisis management, and prevention programs that facilitate students' academic and life goals. Ms. Ally Norman Franks, who heads this support center, does an awesome job leading an amazing team of counselors, as well as putting on many events every month. In particular, next week is the beginning of Red Ribbon Week, another program and week that she's put on. And lastly, I want to just shout out the amazing new BHUSD Instagram account. It really encapsulates everything, so thank you, Ms. Starkins. It really encapsulates everything that happens in the district. I've seen awesome photos from Horace Mann's 90th Anniversary Celebration to Horace Mann's Multicultural Week, and it's been pretty cool, so thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. And finally, Ed Services.
Hi, we're still doing this?
We can, if you, do you want to postpone it?
No, I'll do it. Let's do it. I just assumed you guys, I'm used to always being the last.
Because we save the best for last.
I will go fast.
Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to revisit what I was able to present during our study session on 9/17. So nothing has been changed from the slides, except for one area, which I'll address when I get there. So this presentation, like I stated, was on 9/17. What we were able to do during the study session was I was able to walk the Board of Education and those in attendance through the three areas of focus for the 1920 school year, which is the Advancement of the Summit Assessment, Social, Emotional Learning, and Educational Technology. You've heard tonight a lot of robust conversation around ed tech, so I'll leave that alone. PBIS is already up and running, which is great. You'll also see through the Instagram account certain things like the Donuts for Not Being Tardy and initiatives that are happening within each of the campuses. So I'm gonna kind of jump right into one, and I'm gonna skim by it fast. Obviously, our goal to work towards, and the focus of that, when we bring the single plan, the site plan for student achievement, we'll be bringing that around November 12th. They're due to us by November 1st, after the site council approves them. You will see the common language around our focus on reaching the 80% meets or exceeds state standards in ELA and 70% in math. I'm gonna kind of click through quick, through, and all this is online, both in the study session and on this board agenda, with all of our updated information for each grade band, and how we performed, where we met or exceeded state standards, and the percentage of students, and actually, the number identified. Those numbers, the students identified, are the students that we're really focusing our efforts on, from Title I funding to EL support. So I'm gonna kind of jump all the way to the end, and this is the one, slide 11, is the one that I did and was able to change. And the reason I was able to change is, for some reason, the California Department of Education, who I love, has taken quite some time to release the information around our CAS scores, meaning statewide. Each year, it seems that it gets later and later and later. I had access, and that was the presentation which I was able to provide, but the two pieces that weren't on slide 11 is our comparison. So I think it's hard, when you look at a data point in isolation, you see, well, we have 75% of our students across the district that are meeting or exceeding state standards, which are able to move on to the next grade band with no issue, and 66% of our student population that meets or exceeds state standards in math. And you say, well, that seems a little bit low, no one likes to see grade. When you actually look at the state of California, and I even threw in the charter school, there's a lot of conversation around both local, at the state level, and federally, around charter schools, and the infusion of the charter school, and you'll see that in the state of California, our charter school program actually performed less or lower than the state of California, and we performed close less or lower than the state of California, and we performed close to 20 points, if not 26 points higher than the state of California on average. So I'm going to jump in. Again, we also talked about our ALPAC. ALPAC was the, oh, no, I just forgot the name. Yes, but I forgot the former name of the actual exam, CELT. It allows us to be able to determine whether or not students need EL service. And you can see that even just last year alone, 52 students district-wide scored at a proficiency level, we're able to graduate them out of the EL services program. I'm going to kind of keep jumping through. What's exciting about tomorrow, thank you, Board of Education, is that we have the PSAT tomorrow. As you can see, you'll see these are our 18, 19 scores. I'm going to jump down to the SAT, which is our current seniors, Thomas's grade. And I want to highlight that in our 12th grade students last year, 79% met or exceeded benchmarks within the writing and reading portion in the SAT. That's the data point that I always want to draw our attention to is how well are our students doing towards that post-secondary option versus sometimes we get caught up on this data point, which is the CAS score. We have really worked hard at the high school on trying to focus our energy on the PSAT and SAT and utilizing those data points to affect our curriculum and instruction. And you'll see that our students are doing really well. Our PSAT, which is our current juniors, who are going to take it tomorrow, they are at 82% meets or exceeds benchmark within the reading and writing and 60% in math. We hope to see an increase with tomorrow's data point after they test, and then again in the spring with the SAT. Here is our SAT at a glance kind of thing, if you want to look at even our subject area tests, just the success in which our students have seen, which again, SAT subject tests sometimes provides some college weight to it. Some universities will, one, not admit students without taking subject area exams, but then two, sometimes elect or pass them forward, pass certain entry-level courses into the post-secondary option based off their subject, SAT subject test area. Advanced Placement 2, and I'm nearing the end of this presentation, is another really great highlight, is that you can see in 2018, we are always kind of on a steady climb for total number of students that were achieving a three or higher. You'll see that this year in 2019, so the 2018, 2019 school year, 89% of our students scored a three or higher on our advanced placement. That is phenomenal. And when you tie that to a dollar amount, and I don't have the math of myself right now, you think about $1,500 for a college-level course, times that by how many of these students that will get at least elective, if not in-subject-area credit for those classes. So some of the highlights from those APs, you can see that our biology, on average, our meaning score is a four. AP Calc, close to a four. AB Calc, AP Calc, AB, above a four. So you can even look at our AP French course is close to a five is our score. Almost everybody in that class scored almost a perfect exam. Yep. Last but not least, there has been some questions and discussions around some of the new programming that we've been able to offer here at BHHS. One of the things that we started to conceptualize back in April of 23rd, April 23rd of 2019, was being able to look at how are we utilizing our FTE, both in independent study and Moreno continuation school? We also identified a need that a lot of our Moreno continuation high school students, the former program, needed a lot more individual support and not the group setting, which the group setting was where we're seeing them not successful in. And so we were able to take a lot of the data in which we collected and look at just each individual student, and we were able to combine into one program with a reduction in staffing. So some people will say, well, you've only reduced staff at the elementary level or only at the middle school, and that's incorrect. We did look at all, all grade levels. Some of the changes were that already, this is the other slide, that there is a change. So on slide 19 from the study session, there are now 22 full-time students and it was 19 at the time of the study session. There are zero Moreno high school students. We philosophically are really coming from the standpoint that with individual wraparound services from the Maple Center and our instructors, that we're going to be able to get these students to be, because it's not a cognitive deficit, it is an academic setting issue. So academically, they perform just as high, if not higher, than some of our kids that are in the brick and mortar. And so we, all those students are directly on that BHHS diploma track. Last but not least, one of the exciting things from my end is that course selection. Earlier, you were able to hear a presentation from Nick Walker. Those are some of the other items that we would like to be able to bring with the new Norman Guide revamp. Kim at the high school, Mr. Mead, the high school administration, myself, we've been working to kind of fine-tooth comb the Norman Guide. It hasn't really been looked at from page one to the end in a couple of years. You can see that even some of the authors were different throughout the process. And part of that is even the courses that we're offering in the 2021 school year. So we hope to bring that to be able to show and do a presentation around that so you guys can see the new Norman Guide, in addition to some of the courses that we'll be offering within our budget constraints, I promise. But we will be doing the course selection starting as early as January, so we have that data as a board of education by February 15th to make sure that if we have any additions or subtractions to FTE, we have the data to support those decisions.
Drop the mic.
Okay. Do you have anything you want to ask before?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dustin. I appreciate it. And I'm sorry you were kind of cornered into the end of the meeting here. This is, it is important and hopefully, because it's posted, people can have access to this information and continue to ask questions and marvel at our students' accomplishments and all that. Anything else, colleagues, for that?
You know, Dustin, I just sent you a Nemo asking if I can get a copy, but if it's posted, it's posted, right?
Yeah.
I forgot about that. So just...
On the study session and online. If I can also send you the exact...
Yeah, it's fine. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for reminding me that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, colleagues, quickly, board comments?
So I just have a quick announcement about an event at the high school. UCLA, with the help of Beverly Hills High School ASB, is hosting one of their biannual blood drives on December 3rd in the high school cafeteria. This is not just for students and teachers to donate blood, but it is for the entire community. Our goal this year is to donate 100 units or pints of blood. We really think that we can not only accomplish this goal, but also break it. So we ask that everyone in the community to come out and donate blood. Every unit of blood can save up to three lives. Additionally, not only can you save three lives, but you also will receive a free AMC movie ticket and snacks, so.
That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Snacks are the seller for me. I just wanted to say another congratulations to our national scholars, qualifiers, all of our wonderful students. I also wanted to echo what Mr. Acuparo said about the BHUSD Instagram and also the BVMS Instagram. I don't know if everyone's paying attention to that, but it's awesome. And to be able to have that kind of accessibility of all of the different things going on here and see it really vividly in color with all the kids and parents and teachers engaged, it's awesome. So bravo. Thank you.
Just @GoBHUSD.
@GoBHUSD. Everybody go follow that because it's awesome.
I just wanted to thank, I think we said this last time, the BV, again, the kickoff with the football, the flag football, the pep rally was just, people continued to talk about it, and I think it's, it was really an experience for our district to have. So very, very happy about that.
Thank you, staff, colleagues. Thank you, KBev. I often forget. Thank you, guys, for being here. I appreciate all of the work you guys do. Thank you, colleagues, for being here tonight and handling the government, the business of our governing and getting things moving along. People's kind of sacrificed to be here tonight, so I do, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate the professionalism up here this evening. With that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.